I don't want to come up and give us three minutes. We'll do our best to answer your questions, but we appreciate it in a courteous manner. Okay? Let's keep the language clean. Sir, go ahead. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah. Frank, 700 years to the first. First of all, I hear from the motion to accept the 5,000. That will be up on the website.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I can barely hear you.
The 2000, it says here, the motion to accept the 5,000, that will be up on the website.
Yes, that will be up on the website, absolutely. Now, there was just a couple of minor corrections we made to that audit. We outlined them at the last meeting. It was like on two pages. And one had to do with the leasing of copiers and the other was the overall debt. I think the overall debt in the previous audit was 91 million. It's supposed to be 93 million. And the leasing of the copiers was 400 and some odd thousand. It was supposed to be 47,000. So those were the two clerical errors that needed to be addressed.
The second thing I have to warn myself is the budget that you guys are posting on the internet.
Yes.
If you want us to help you, it has to be in a more... It's really not a lot of information. It's very unsophisticated. Basically, it's going to the personal services, the insurance, it's very complicated. I have capital in Brooklyn, I have operations maintenance, the planning service, you have a project of 4,600,000. I have about 6,000. That really is as much of a breakdown for us to help you figure out where your problems are. If you guys have a bit of foreign information, if you want us to allow you to know, that's a big tip. Just tell us how you want us to access the information so we can help you.
Okay. I think what we tried to do when Ms. Reno was up here two weeks ago or four weeks ago, I can't remember now, and asked for some of our working documents. Clearly, what we do post is the preliminary budget as it's... In the format that it's required to be submitted to PDE. That's about as clear as mud. So what we also posted up there was our Excel worksheets, which list all of our expenses and all of our revenues by line item over the last four years. And it's broken down into... There's specific codes there, and then they list them underneath the codes, the nomenclature for each one. It's a pretty lengthy spreadsheet. It's about, I don't know, 1,000 lines or something like that.
You know, and then what we just talked about on Wednesday, if you're going to have any questions after the...
Yes.
...what you want us to have the question that you gave, would you consider that again?
I hear what you're saying. We've tried it a couple of different ways in the past, and I think the issue that we've found is that we don't get any work accomplished. One of the things that we're trying to get done at the workshop is actually have a discussion amongst board members and get to some decisions. Look, we're always available to take comment, and I can think I speak here for everyone. Our email addresses are up online on the website. I get emails all the time from folks with suggestions which are helpful.
Okay. The last thing I have is we all have this issue with Shena, with her... The impact that you guys have on the dividend and the others is that when you guys start taking away services, you're also in the national production of office, real estate, property values. At that moment, they need a profit, but they have the year's profits to be assessed. And I see right now that you guys have approximately 81 million, 93 million dollars of debt service with assets, real estate, approximately the value that you guys are going to have. As a real estate, because they have a similar purpose. So when you guys have 81 million dollars available or borrowed now, if you guys see a deflation amount of 10%, you lose the ability to borrow what you have. Then you also see everybody in the community. You're not only affecting the school, you're affecting you, birth, and every person is going to be affected by your decisions. It could be substantial if you guys are losing approximately 3 million dollars more than we're here.
Let me address that. So we're at three minutes. Let me just try to address your question real quick. Clearly, we understand that any decision that we make impacts the community. It's 20-something thousand people that live here. And whether it's raising taxes, which is an option, which is currently in our preliminary budget. We are... It's in there to solve this $5 million budget deficit, to raise taxes by the index and the special exceptions. That impacts property values as well. Our debt clearly is impacted by our ability to tax. It's not based on our real estate assessments. It's based on our ability to collect taxes from our tax base. We issue bonds, and those bonds are secured by our ability to collect revenues from the taxpayers of the school district. So... And we are over-leveraged. Moody's has told us that. It's in our audits. We're borrowed up to the hilt. So, you know, we need to be aware of those things. And I've said it this at other board meetings too. We are also sensitive to the fact that in different communities, people are facing different issues. In Birdsboro, you guys have extremely high water and sewer bills that you have to pay in addition to your real estate taxes. Union Township is considering a tax increase this year as well. Amity Township has held the line on their taxes, but, you know, look, everyone in Amity Township, there's been a lot of development in single-family homes, and those homes are assessed at a much higher value than older homes in the districts. So they pay a lot more in terms of real estate taxes. So we take all that into consideration, along with the program cuts that we're considering here as well. And it's not an easy task. We try to balance all those concerns and constraints to get to a solution. That's all I can tell you. Okay? I got you at your three minutes. I got to move on. I'm sure there's a lot of people here that want to... But come to the meeting on Wednesday night, okay? Thank you.
How about county and general rec, uh, seniority workers?
Yes.
I wanted to address the kindergarten issue, and I know that I've set a lot of parents. But I say cut it because we are talking about one plus one. We are talking about your colors. These are things that parents should be teaching their kids at home, especially when you're covering programs in middle and high school that are preparing our children for college. You've got to have kids who are not only ten, not two people, the rest of the world. I would much rather put my money in that middle and in the high school and know that if we have kids who are sitting off and complete kindergarten, what I think that people really look at, the comparison of what they're learning. I know because I've done my investigation with my own children, kindergarten first and second grade, they're all about keeping... Keeping the kids the fundamentals. No one is high or low. They're trying to get them all at a level playing field. It is not until third grade of this school district who makes the French gate teaching. That's when our kids go off to math class because they realize that it's high and it's low. That's when they start moving kids around. The kindergarten first and second grade is all about teaching them the same fundamentals. Reading, math. You can't get shot at all. Stop putting all responsibility on the teacher, kindergarten teacher, with 25 kids. You have one child doing that job. Because, Ken, if you talk to any teacher, there's two or three kids that are holding up the classroom anyway. If you really want to do something, this is what they still do in these areas. They test all of them. And since the first year, parents are getting letters saying, "Your child is natural." Parents get shocked because they're only taking the kids who did not know their A Cs, or numbers, or letters, or colors. The rest of them, you came in there, you didn't function, you stay home another year. You need to consider that, that's something. Get the kids who are really in a struggle. Every teacher will tell you, they have a few in the classroom that really needs the help. But we are talking about the basics. People are looking for data. They don't care about like that. Programs in the high school are getting cut, and I'll be seeing a beat going on for college.
Okay. Thank you.
My daughter played fast, she's tall, baseball team, all up to the floor program, which you are cutting the indoor program. I paid $640,000 for my daughter to do the indoor. I want to know if the cost has paid.
Thank you.
Open up your checkbook and pay your money like I do.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Hold it, guys. Please. Everyone's afforded an opportunity to speak at the microphone. Three minutes, okay? Give everyone the same courtesy that you would expect to get when you're at the microphone, okay? No shout-outs from the crowds. Let everyone have an opportunity to speak. Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Nancy. I have 132 years in residence. First of all, I'd really like to say, there are all kinds of studies that will show you the impact of kindergarten on the ability to own a home, go to college, and later on, the ability for people to get married. So they're all long-term effects of kindergarten, just kind of like, you know, I can forward those studies to you. As a part, I do want to thank Ms. Shena for talking about the transformation and all the other things. I also want to thank the boardroom board for putting different options. And I think that's what we really need to talk about tonight. Very... I would love to have a read, but the fact of the matter is, we're all here because we have to be paying attention. Everybody, this one. So what we need to do is Laurel has been really into it, just that I don't feel the first time tonight. But I think that if there's a blueprint out there for how people fill this budget, because it's a very passionate community. And the primary centers are able to get, I don't even know, I think it's almost $5,000 worth of box tops. So if you can get every primary center to get box tops, what can you do with all this cash flow? So what I'm asking you is will you pass a motion tonight to form this test course that we can help you? I will stand in the background until 3:00 in the morning if I have to. And every person who's out there for streaming and management, if you're willing to work on this test course with me, I will... I will help you. I will look into this. I will work with Laurel. I will work with all of you. But if you need to make a motion, maybe you will allow us to do that. So will you vote on that tonight, number one? And... And then, I was like, I'm sorry, I don't have the motion.
It's okay. All right.
I don't think there's anything that we have to vote on to officially allow citizens to get together and ask for information to dig into the budget. You could do that on your own. You've done it fast, and that's part of the state of the taxpayer association. You sat down and did a lot of matters nothing. You can ask the information. You can get the information. You can dig into it and ask a question. Present your views, your opinions, and your ideas. You may officially be asked or be voted to do that.
No, I think, you know, obviously, we want to be able to facilitate the transfer of information so people can file a write-to-no request to get what they need in order to do the due diligence that they want to do. We want to be able to, you know, forward to them whatever information they need to start the process. I think clearly the biggest obstacle up front is going to be just getting people familiar with how our budget is formulated and what's in it. And that's a Herculean task. I mean, I'm willing to spend my time with whatever group is formulated to help people understand that.
Can I use this to add this, can you start a date number?
Sure.
Okay. And then, really, I think I'm going to say, really, I know you guys are trying to figure out this whole interim. I have to make a plus 35% of what I don't for us to, for me to set my salary next year in interim. You guys have to make a decision. You set my step, it has to be my step because these spots are coming up at these different schools, and we won't have the options. Okay? So maybe they're like, "Oh, we can't start another, whatever." Well, we can't. We have to put classes down. We have to figure out what we're going to do with the budget. So you guys have to make that decision when I step. I hope you have that judgment in your mind.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Leach, 228 Ashford Drive. I was reading about Weird Town School District, and I'm going to be back by the teachers' room. But I want to know, one, how, what the pay raise is for a teacher over there? And if it's like mandatory, that just for being a teacher and being in the school district, they get a raise? And if so, Weird Town School District, they all voted, they're agreeing, finally came together and voted and realized that we're going to cut all these things, we're going to cut all these programs, we're going to cut these, we're going to cut work, we're going to hurt kids. They finally came together and decided, okay, we're not going to take pay raises. And I think it's two and a half years that they voted on, and they solidified, and it saved, I think, speaking to someone here, it saved a million dollars. Um, I don't know what that... So how often have we spoken to the union and tried to get the union to kind of come together with us? They love the children too, I believe, and the teachers do. I see them at the end around there. They go, "Well, I can see it, I disagree." But the union president, hopefully he's here, or you are.
The union president is behind you.
Okay. Where?
Right there.
Oh, good. So, since your union president has already brought it to the union, and what do you guys see there?
Eighty-six, so much of your drive, doing this good question two years ago. The teacher gave us a look and see, we were already going through concessions with the school district at that time. We took the pay fees. It was because we stayed on step or actually leading the school district back, but I think that's another thing here since that time, and we're trying to make a special plan. So...
So they are consulting with you or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi. Jennifer, I said, old school five, Ashford Drive. And I was wondering, I know everybody, if I had a kindergarten, I'd like to be wondering about that. But when are you going to make a decision on people who have... Because people are starting to put sales signs up, they're putting out their schools, and I like that, the fact that you were looking at a PDA, not that it was $500 for a sport. But I think you need to like advertise the whole, because saying that it's gone is not helpful at all. Do you have...
Well, I mean, I think if you've been to... We've discussed a couple of different things since December. We've talked about if our program were to not be here next year, would there be a community group that could pick up where we left off? We've talked to the Amity Athletic Club in terms of supporting our middle school sports and maybe even our high school sports as part of our revenue enhancement committee meetings. We're trying to figure out ways to fund that part of our budget and make it self-sustaining. I mean, I would like to see our extracurriculars to be insulated from further budget discussions, not only this year, but every year going forward, that whatever revenues they generate through ticket sales or concessions or activity fees are enough to cover the costs. Problem is, our costs go up every single year due to salaries and benefits. So we have to figure out a path forward for those types of things.
Is it fair that the monies that are reflected through those activities don't go towards the activities? That maybe by...
Look, I mean, we only have a finite amount of money in the school district, right? So...
You have a school charter that's out.
No. Look, and that's the point, is that what you're witnessing is a reallocation of funds, okay, within the school district. So, you know, we have a certain amount of money, and as our obligations go up in one area, we have to figure out other places where it has to go down and take those monies and move them over to pay for those other obligations. That's what's happening. And so it's not like this board is sitting up here and just saying, "Look, we think we're going to get rid of this program, and we're just banking the money." It's... That's not what happens here, is, hey, look, our expenses went up to here, and now we don't have the funds to pay... I mean, we've got a $5 million, $4.8 million deficit, $3.5 million of salaries and benefits. Okay? Another one and a half million comes from, or $800,000 is from the bond defections we did last year. So we're refunding that. And then the balance is, what was the balance of that? Fund balance use? So that's... And that's what the case is this year. That's going to be the case next year too. And so...
That's supposed to be closed down. You take away all the...
It's... That's not, I mean, it's not in our hands. I mean, we are operating... All the assumptions that are being made as part of this budget are under the assumptions that there's no contractual concessions throughout all of our collective bargaining partners, okay? Not just the teachers, but all of them, okay? That's... We built in certain assumptions in terms of modeling this budget so we could see what the worst-case scenario is. And we have been actively engaging our collective bargaining partners since December to try to come up with a solution to this, okay? And that's one lever. We keep talking about levers up here. The other lever is a tax increase. As part of our preliminary budget, we have a maximum tax increase available to us by law without going to a referendum. That's built in, okay? We've got the program cuts built in, and we have use of fund balance. Now, it came up earlier, could you use all your fund balance? Well, the answer is yes. We can use all of our fund balance, and then next year, we have no money left in our fund balance. And if we got to balance a budget, there's nothing, there's no more lever to pull there anymore, okay? And so we'll be having the same conversation all over again about kindergarten and extracurricular activities and maybe even some other programs, because quite frankly, there's nothing else to cut to make up the difference. So that's what we're struggling with up here. And, you know, as a result, Revenue Enhancement Committee is trying to, you know, rehash ideas that we've discussed over the last three or four years and see if we can't turn over those stones again and find additional revenues. But quite frankly, that's nickels and dimes compared to what we really need. I mean, they're $10,000 here, $5,000 there. That may be enough to save one or two extracurricular activities. It's not enough to save them all. I mean, we need millions of dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars need to be found somewhere to solve these problems.
Take the point of me, I think this is a lot of people, the activity fee. What I say, man, the activity fee, no way it comes anywhere close to funding any single program.
Our programs cost about $680,000. Activity fees cover 200, tops.
For football, that doesn't come close to, or I think the only sport that comes close to being self-funded is wrestling and cheerleading.
Cheerleading.
Those sports come close to self-funding because they... They raise money. But there are no other sport that comes close, so we're working on that. Now, Mr. Basil, just so you understand, with the teachers, there's our collective bargaining, we have four collective bargaining agreements. We have one with the X93, which is our ministry, principles, and that knows, we've talked with that. We're talking with the support staff, which are the janitorial staff, the teachers aides, the secretaries, you know, cafeteria workers. There's the teachers. And then there's the confidential secretaries. Then there's the bus companies. So there's five contract partners we're dealing with right now. You heard earlier, if we can lift five buses, it's $150,000. And they've brought it to the table one time to us already. So we're pulling those levels, and we're trying to work on it. Unfortunately, it doesn't work quickly. And that's probably because we work with teachers, and we come up with an idea, they have to go back, and then they got to go back to their populace, and they come back again, and it's not done overnight. And that's part of the problem. We got, we also understand, you know, having the rest of kindergarten, or if we decide to do Lloydwood Sports, having to try to not do, do a district that's contiguous to ours, if they take you to be able to participate in that sport in those districts. So, you know, we're aware of that constraint where it's difficult to see them. We've got a budget meeting, keep the problem at one close to every week until we get this thing worked out.
Well, I think the other constraint that we have here too is, you know, obviously, we have certain event horizons that we're trying to address. You know, a month ago, it was whether or not we were going to agree to put a preliminary budget forward that exceeded the index for raising taxes. Okay? That was one event horizon. The second event horizon is, you know, parents want to know what they're going to do about kindergarten. Parents want to know what's going to happen with athletics and marching band and things of those natures. These deadlines, obviously, are coming to us before we're getting answers from our collective bargaining partners. So, you know, we can say yes, yes, yes to everyone, we're going to keep these things, but if we don't have the money to provide them, I think we're providing false promises. And that's something we have to wrestle with. Now, there are things that we're looking at. You know, there's $200,000 in Corbett's budget that has been allocated to the school district, but that's tied to, I believe, privatizing the liquor licenses and reforming pensions. It's not kind of that anymore? Okay. So we've added that $200,000 to our budget. We are looking at closing the Amity Primary Center. There's $600,000 there that we're looking at. This board can't render a decision on that until May 6th. But there's potentially $800,000 there that we can use towards balancing a $4.8 million deficit. We still have a long way to go. So I hope that answers your questions.
You're saying June, you should...
Mr. McCullough, please.
Raise you.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is June a fair, like, is June going to whether it's kindergarten or athletics?
I'm hopeful that we'll have an answer before then. I guess it really depends on what the fruits of our labor are with our contractual partners. If we can get answers sooner, we'll have answers sooner for the public.
What about the first weeks? June is...
Well, yeah, I mean, June is, you know, we actually put out our budget for public review at the end of May.
Well, we're going to, I'd like to thank you for giving the answers to the question I asked two weeks ago on the transportation. I think you can also extend that now to elementary. If you've ever been in an elementary school in the morning or afternoon, you compare, if you have a parent or a mother, there are parents that just don't let their kids on buses. Another thing to look at, might have that school seems that ride a bus to school, but don't ride it home every day. And if that maybe, maybe we have more buses going in the morning, but they're not going that many after school, the students stay after for various activities. It might be something that could be looked into in a survey format and all of that. I think one of the biggest problems here is that it's this us versus them mentality that we're just going to work with the parents that come to these meetings. I think for the meetings, it's a much more relaxed atmosphere with a lot of get and take. I don't know how you guys put up all the meetings. I can't put up all the meetings. So I think here to have, I found a picture, what it is that we, that we need to work together instead of by leaning against each other and feeling like we're not working towards the same goal. The children are all at the same goal. So I'd like, if we could somehow work on that. Are we moving the referendum to the end of the month? The tax, or is that the already passed?
March 22nd is the date. This board would need to make a decision on that.
Okay. The other question was about kindergarten. In the paper today, there was an article, a representative was trying to introduce a bill that would make it a kindergarten mandatory, and that the age for children to go to school, not the age, but sex. You know, you might have to consider long-term risks if something like that happened. Then your future happens in kindergarten. So to build it in there as a given that government would take it could protect you in a few years of the way the state works, who knows, could it ever be passed? My other question was, on the budget that you had, mine for coming out, but it shows that overall salaries, with all of the cuts they're making, are only going up about half a million dollars. The other benefits are going up 1.4 million. I'm wondering if I can get a recommendation on that? And also, what is 9,500, which is another 1.6 million?
I'm sorry.
I'm assuming they know what it is, but...
For what?
Line item 5,000.
Oh, line item 5,000 is debt service.
And that's an increase of 1.6 million dollars this year over... It's a very large increase.
Remember, we defused bonds last year, $800,000. So we're paying $800,000 more this year than we did last year.
Okay. So the way it brings, at the very bottom of that four-year expression...
What we can do is we can talk about, are you going to be at the meeting tomorrow night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night, I mean.
You're trying to make it.
Okay. Well, if you have specific questions like that, feel free to email them to me, or if Daniel can try to address this.
What it means by a defense bond, whereas it pay, we're able not to make a payment...
Right.
...of $800,000 last year. One time, it did make a payment. Well, that gave us $800,000. That $800,000 didn't do very much this year, as well as the $800,000 we have to pay. $1.6 million swing.
Okay. And real quick on the fund balance. In 2008, we started at the beginning, fund balance was 3.195. All these numbers came right out of the budget chart online. 2009 was 3.8. In 2010, it was 3.6. 2011, it was 3.1. And I believe that is the year that the teachers made concessions. And we started this year with 4.249 budget. And I know you're projected to use 1.203 to balance the current year's budget. What are you forecasting the general budget to be now that we're halfway through the school year? Because according to the preliminary budget for '13, '14, you've got 3.5 listed.
I don't have it with me. I'll have it Wednesday.
Okay.
I have the number. I just, I can't tell you what it is right now.
Because every year, the years you have projected to use, only one year does go over. That's the one I said, we have to... 3,845 of them use over.
Okay. All right. So we'll be on in three minutes, but what we're going to... Clearly, these are discussions we've had annually at the budget meetings, and we do try to project where we are vis a vis our current budget and how much fund balance we have, whether we're on target or off target. we're on target or off target. A question we pepper our business manager with typically at every meeting, where do you project our fund balance to be? Where do you project our fund balance to be? We ask that question at every single meeting, because it is important. What happened sometimes in the past is, we had funds that were brought to our attention later by the state Plan Con J, I think it was a year ago, where $800,000 was refunded to the school district that we had not anticipated. We have had stimulus money come, you know, three years ago to the school district. So, there are certain things that have happened that we did not anticipate, and that has led us to use less fund balance than we originally anticipated. But, look, I'm clearly an advocate for using fund balance, as much of it as we need to. So, we'll talk more on Wednesday night about those specific items.
One last comment is, you have to realize that fund balance has, what they refer to as unallocated and allocated. So, even though you get the full number, you have to look at the unallocated, because that's the portion we can grab from. If something's allocated, we can't take that without, but...
I believe I took it from on the sign.
Okay, on the sign, on the sign, great.
Okay.
And then, other use of the fund balance, and just, I'm sure you probably know, but one of the big uses of the fund balance is to pay those bills that come in early in the fiscal year before our tax dollars come in. So, we may, we may end up having to tap into that fund balance to pay our debt, and our debt service, and whatever other bills there are, knowing that we're gonna get the tax dollars in September, October, whatever. That's why you only see a number there, is to cover those expenses.
But I understand, the other issue is, although it's not a double swing like it was with the bond payments, we use 1.2 million dollars of fund balance, but 1.2 million dollars we need to make up immediately next year. It's not another, it's not like taxes work year in and year out. 1.2 million dollars, and I'm with the Vegas law, I prefer to spend fund, spend fund balance on zero, same program. But I understand that we use 2.4 million dollars, with 2.4 million dollars immediately in the hole next year.
Okay, Mr. Temple.
Eric, 2032, Main Street, Tulsa. So, thanks in advance, you're a realist, former diversity committee, it was called, and everything else is going on in the world, across the country. Has it been informed, sensitivity there in kindergarten, status, cabinet, state, administration, systems, how?
We've had a number of programs that, we've had, the diversity committees met, I don't know if this is what you're looking for in terms of your answer, but we've had some ongoing training at the building level, we have diversity committees at every building now. We have had a number of...
These are administrative diversity committees, not just community group.
No, at, at the building level, we have now taken it down into the school level, and just Friday's example of the assembly that we had for the, the Michaela's Assembly that got some coverage in the news is all part of our diversity effort, so...
Just one set, service, service day, or what you call it, service day, that was all I did, that was all I...
Yes, we have had, yes, a number of, a number of buildings have done that, yes.
Good. Now, this one point is, uh, what about...
The general fund balance, is that what you're referring to?
Is this also the, the things that the fund balance controls, that are all of our resources at school?
No, understand that we have an operating budget. The operating budget is around $50 million, and aside from that, think of this as kind of like your, our savings account, okay? So, we have a certain money set aside, and that's our fund balance, and that money is available for capital projects that may come up, it's available to cover, as Mr. Cermonero pointed out, our working capital needs. So, from July 1st to August 15th or 17th, we have no money in the school district, but we have to pay debt service, and we have salaries we have to pay. So, we use fund balance at that time, about $2 million of it, to pay people and to pay off our debts.
What, one of the school board members said, all back to the reform of states. And I think our main state was back with the U.S. U.S. and then the... Everyone loved the fact that the U.S. U.S., and then you get the taxes down, you get a spot. Taxes get stayed down because the fund balance is going down, too. And when the number two lieutenant came on board, once on Friday night, the town for football, when we got our quarterback, our toy group down in football field, guess what? No money. Now, our taxes went up big, I need to close that. And that's because of the reform of states, so it's going top down, so you can't come up from that. Because I want everything to be, I don't want bad to stay, um, kindergarten to stay, but it's a point that you've got to be, you've got to learn from states, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, we have 36 seconds left, everyone. I was reading something on the Denny's Elementary School, I was asking, the following factors will greatly influence the success of their acceptance by a school. The high school record, the single most important factor in college admissions is a high school student card that gets to ninth grade. Second in college, fourth, fourth, although your S and P scores, I understand, will not be used to support your academic merit, and your various extracurricular activity involvement. One of the factors can contribute to the probability of gaining more and improving education people. All other factors may be, or, 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 the common role in activities of this elementary school, run government and management.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Judy.
Judy, no.
Just a clarification, the question on that statement, is your...
It should be here at 7:30, okay?
Okay.
Is it 7:30 or 7?
7:30.
7:30, Wednesday night, here.
Okay. And sorry, I'm not... Will, will this be here, maybe?
I don't think so.
That is the order. If we got four, I think this meeting, we have a lot to do. How do you question that? I'm not sure about that. You have called it a workshop, but a workshop, one was... Could it possibly be a voting meeting as well? I mean, is something not...
I believe all of our meetings are posted as voting meetings.
Okay, I was looking for that. You're saying that 12 things have to tell at this meeting, could possibly come with a little on...
I don't think, no, I don't think, I think the decision of the board was, we're gonna table those items until we've made some decisions vis-à-vis our entire budget. I don't know if those things will come back up until, may not come back up again until May or June, quite frankly, I mean, this... They could come up back up for discussion, well, they could come up for discussion at any time during any of our budget discussions, but clearly, if there are additional funds that are forthcoming from the state, or a group of people get together and they're gonna donate $100,000 to the school district, or there's concessions made by our contractual partners, well, that changes everything, right? I mean, then we, with more information, we can make better decisions.
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
Michelle, House of Five, 57, the anniversary. I was looking online, and actually, it's part of the packet that you guys had for tonight, but there is expenditure category that, and I know I don't wanna keep bringing up the right to know, but it just bugs me. It says, other objects, 4,204,709. There's other uses of funds of 2,69,471. I'm just wondering, what possibly means this amount that is to the day?
It's our debt service. We have $7 million debt service nut that we have to cover every single year.
And...
Those payments come in August, October, April, February, so that there's certain lump sum payments that hit our budget throughout the year. It's not the same monthly payment every, every, every time, it's, it's lumpy.
Is any of that analyzing debt?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So, okay. I can feel...
We, we have several bond issues that extend all the way out to 2034, but overall, our debt service on those bond issues is about $7 million a year until 2034.
I'm just wondering, how, how could you be, how could you be giving that?
Well, they're not getting, well, look, I mean, they're not giving it to us anymore, but, you know, this school district, you know, built a middle school, it put the annex on, it built the school run today, it built an annex, it built the Monocacy Center, and then we spent $12 million on Amity Primary Center and, and a stadium. So, it, it doesn't take long for the numbers to add up to, to 100 and some odd million dollars.
It's just irresponsible spending, in my opinion, and that respect the problem I get, but we do wanna help you move on, we do, we believe in the school. You know, no one said anything positive about the school anymore, but I did read that David Moon is number one in the county for math scores on the P O S A. And I thought, you know, that, that's just something that, you know, maybe the school can, maybe can move and, and say, you know, my guys, good job to our kids, because, you know, but they, that proves that they are good kids, and they're good people. We have a lot of great parents, and I just think, we can do it, but we are gonna have to work together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I was Davidovich.
Yes.
President of the congregation, I'm sure you're still circling the segments, but Matt President, I mean, I'm sure, I know it seems like I'm, like, I'm sure I haven't seen as a long help about the media, the most leaders, you know, Matt President, the board, the media, the board, trying to, those negotiations, discussions, you know, operating, the organization, insubordination service, relax, it's a reality, not to, of your own. And it's, you know, timelines have come on and on and on, and I know you have timelines around, you know, business talks, you know, cross parents, it's real, which is, you have to, you know, do you agree with my vote, or do you agree to do it? It was shocking.
It's not a confrontational, that's... I mean, we're working together, right now, we're getting information, Dave, Temple, we're, we're giving information to each other, on, here is the effect of certain things, so it's not intensive, relevant, relevant.
And all, I know we've got four, multiple, so another three, three more?
We appreciate the, the opinion on that and, and your, your offer. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a thing. Maybe you said earlier that the total loss that the district would absorb from the kindergarten spending, $100,000 total? So, that's about $27,000, is what you mean?
That's what we understand from the Department of Education, I think that's correct.
And, um, did I understand also that you're saying that if the district does not offer transportation that, or offers partial transportation to elementary students that climbs or the road, is pivoted from offering independent transportation to the remaining students, even if the school is not otherwise involved in that?
Yes, there's, um, section 13, 1365 of the school code says that it shall be unlawful for any driver or owner of a vehicle transporting pupils under contract with the district, or for, to demand, request, or accept any compensation for transport, transporting students, other than the compensation stipulated in the contract filed with and approved by the Department of Education, and that's the contract between the district and the, the transportation contractors. It's unlawful for them to charge additional fees.
So, would it be possible to have all of our residents who are working together, so we never have to have opportunity to run the remaining students for a day?
Unfortunately, we have a contract with both. Neither one has, I believe, the busing capability to provide the services that we currently have, so together, they work together to meet our needs.
And then, so, as far as community, Wednesday, is the board, does it have any intention on moving on whether to entail anything?
Well, I mean, who knows, we could surprise you. I, I have no idea what could happen on Wednesday night. If I did, I wouldn't be sitting here, I'd be in Vegas. So, you know, look, we're, we're trying to solve some problems, and if we can make some good decisions, then we'll make those decisions on Wednesday night if it helps the public, you know, get on with their lives, so to speak. But at the end of the day, if, if we can't, then we can't. I, I just can't promise you anything.
Well, and what the governor said in that comment there, I'm sorry, I...
Mr. McCullough.
Maybe it's something, I mean, there has to be a priority level of, like, this is the most important, this is the second most important, things break back.
Well, I think the issue is for the board is, we, we all may have different opinions about what's most important.
But at some point, it has to be consensus, and I feel like that would be helpful, we share the community, so we have an idea of where to go from here. As far as kindergarten, we have to pay, by the way, still have our doctors to register our kids for kindergarten, and if you're not, if you haven't had it, it's not over here to ask.
I hear you.
Um, maybe my, as you said, as you know, this is my, I don't know, but the first one, I didn't speak to you in the morning. My daughter fully will go off kindergarten share, whether it's today, I go, which I would prefer, maybe go to happen, I would pay, because I give it out, $5,500 next year for her to go to her current daycare. And guess what? I pay whether she comes here or not, I still pay the same amount, or she wants to either not, but as an employee this year, I value the basis that you give her for the rest of her life, or helping her, everything, her career. I value it, and I appreciate everything you're doing and the work that you're putting forward. But something that I can tell me, and have other people in the building, for instance, situations, is giving us information, not only are we a woman, but if she goes to kindergarten here or somewhere else, what should I expect her to do? Whether she's gonna go to the first grade, or just gonna go to need to kindergarten, be ready for kindergarten. And I know, you can practice, I have examples where they're asking individual questions, but at the same time, we have something else, like, I can know she's prepared for the class, whether she's at kindergarten, at early kindergarten, in the children, or not, that would help ease my mind and my mind over.
So, you're looking for us to publish on our website some sort of benchmarks that we're looking for, for children in first grade?
Yeah, something that, if you have it for kindergarten, go ahead, that would be know our kids are ready to...
Is that a strategic plan, or? I think they have that, we can, I'll work with them.
Be able to, or they should be ready to do it.
Okay. Yeah. That's easy to accomplish.
Shane, I will be very, very proud of you. I just want to remind you, the school board, that you chose to be in fighting, you know, this year.
I'm sorry, could you say it again?
You chose to be in fighting, you know, this year. At the end of the budget process last year, chose not to increase property tax at all. If you would increase the property tax, like you had to, for the preliminary budget, you would want $1,000 from last year, and $1,000 from this year. So, this board chose to be this far in, in that, in the hole. If you truly believe that these programs were this important, there's several coordinators that brought it up into the entire board's attention, and we will be fighting, you know, and we will, we won't have any other choice but to make these cuts. And this school board was a majority, I mean, well, it wasn't a majority, it was everybody, but it was a majority that chose not to pay a tax increase. So, now, we are in this big process. I don't know, you say $125,000, it won't tax you, but now, I'm paying for clubs, and fees, on all, over $600,000 easy this year. And that's what also means, you are treating your, your students, like they are part of the school district, and you are looking to make them find the, your past wars and mistakes, okay? We are in a hole that denies the students' responsibilities to find your problem. No one likes that property taxes are the reason, are, is way of application in the budget. That's not part of your control, but if something is this important, you should apply that, and say, you know, we need to at least introduce it to cover these important things. You chose to just say, okay, we're better to score the dice. You can't look as a student, as the only record scorer, far, score seeds, lunches are going out, I mean... that go out, I mean, bus tickets. You're in every way, maybe one of the students, and it's, it's still not going to fix our problem. Second thing, your buses, can you fit three kids to a seat? I was a white house driver. You can fit three students to a seat. And then you're not looking back at the, the elements, but if you could, three kids into a, a seat, you know, and take a long third of the road.
Okay. Let me just address your, from backwards going forwards. In terms of how many kids we can fit in a seat, I don't know what the law is on that. Clearly, we have safety harnesses and things of that nature that are in the seats that I think would dictate the number of students that could be put in each, each position. And that's a legal question, and I don't think we have the answer to that tonight. Two, in terms of, I think the comments you made regarding how we chose to be here, I'm going to take issue with that argument. I think it's a disingenuous argument to say that we got here based on decisions that were made last year. Okay? Oh, oh, you have your three minutes. Okay, let me just finish, okay? How we got here is a process, and it wasn't one night, it wasn't one vote. It was a series of decisions that were made over time. Okay? And it started in 2008. All right? And those decisions that were made then, in terms of signing contracts with our transportation partners, with our collective bargaining partners, the teachers' unions, decisions that are made when we negotiate individual contracts with all of our collective bargaining partners, the debt that we entered into, all of these decisions, using fund balance or not using fund balance, making cuts or not making cuts. I mean, I sat on this board for a number of years where no cuts were made, and we were throwing surpluses year after year after year. Was, was that fair? Okay? Was it, was it fair that we signed a contract without understanding what its ramifications were going to be long term? Was that fair? Now, the taxpayers in this school district, we've had this discussion, Mr. Cockle, have watched their taxes go up over the last 15 years, 7% a year. Okay? So $100 one year may not be a problem. $150 every year for 15 years gets to be a problem for some people. Those people may not be represented here tonight, but I can assure you, two or three weeks ago, they were here, and they were concerned about raising their taxes. So this gets back to our earlier conversation about balancing all the constraints in the school district. We have parents who want to fund things, we've got parents who don't want some program cuts, we've got people who are on fixed incomes, who can't afford to see their property taxes increase. We've got to take all those considerations into, into mind. And this board gets there through consensus. So it's a compromise. And it's not just this board, it's everybody in the school district. Right? We've got 300 and some odd employees in this school district that have a voice in what happens here. Okay? We have taxpayers that have a voice in what happens here. You know, and it's not just the nine of us or five people up here making a decision, it's everybody. And we're all part of the process, and we're not picking on the students. Okay? We spend thousands of hours trying to figure out a way to keep as much program as possible for our kids. That, that's it.
Just, just another point, I mean, you said 2008, I would care to go back further. Middle, I started, well, this is my eighth year with the board. M E C Land was already bought. Building was already designed, architect was already selected eight years, before I got on the board, eight years ago. So these processes probably go back to 2000.
Yeah.
And, and I understand everybody's argument about, you know, well, you didn't need, they call this place the thousand hall. Go ahead, knock off the little things you want, knock the million dollars off them. You know, go ahead and say you don't want the $3 million to the state. That doesn't touch that $7 million debt load by month. I mean, it, it's the entire $90 million. Okay? Go ahead and drop $2 or $3 million, it's not going away. It's the fact that, you know, it probably goes back when we built the high school, you know, and, and it, so it goes that far back. And I don't think I lived in the district in that episode. You know, so it, it goes back probably into the 90s, you know? And there was a gentleman here, and I'm going to say my face is this, there was a gentleman here talking about the townships. You guys need to go into Amity Township and complain why the buildings that were suggested to be built aren't being built anymore, next to the post office and, and the other place. They're not doing it. I mean, it's not being done. We don't have the infrastructure of, of shopping centers and buildings, office buildings, a lot of school districts do. We have to get our taxes, we have to get our revenue for one, one, one place only, and that's everybody here. And that's the unfortunate problem. So, you know, if you want to help us out, go across the street, as an Amity Township resident, we crowd their meetings and ask them why Reddy's Hospital isn't putting in their, their center next to the post office? And why, you know, Duncan Notice or whatever else was supposed to be done, if it's been done. The shopping center across from Charlie's or whatever place it's called now, never went in. I mean, those are the questions, the hard questions you've got to ask.
Okay, Mr. Cockle, we're going to move on.
Make the final decision, what is important. And if you nine made that call, you know, a little bit of a tax increase is more important than?
You know, if we play the money, the money actually quartered that, if we have a tax increase last year, I don't think there's a person here that said, yeah, we probably overlooked it, we probably should have put something in. That's last year, we need to handle this year. And we're trying to do it, and, and, you know, it's one of these things where it's around the 4:11 at night, we're all going to get to tank rest a little bit. But going back to, we made a mistake last year, it's just going to get us all fired. But yeah, we probably did make a mistake. We're trying not to do that this year. And we need to move forward this year.
And, and it's not the nine of us up here. Okay? It takes other, other groups in this school district to come forward and help us out. We can't force our collective bargaining partners to the table to help us with these decisions. We can't force our, our transportation companies to come to the table and, and work with us. People have to voluntarily come forward and work with this board to come to some solutions. Okay? That's what has to happen. We can't mandate someone change their contract. If we could, we would.
Right, but there's one thing you didn't have control. You could ask them to do it. You chose.
We could have used more fund balance, Mr. Cockle. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cockle. Any other comments?
My name is Shimon, I'm a private, 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 private student. I just want one question. How many teachers are recruited at this?
288.
That's all?
290.
Plus the lab. No, plus the lab.
And the 270. 278.
If you take the budget sheets for words, like, very tense, decided that that will be ten, it's very hard compared to paying for a work hour. So my question to you is, when you go back to the union collective bargaining, which is what helps save tax order, what helps save teachers' ability to concede, you took only the target in the negotiating third meeting, which got rid of some burnt top salaries, which helped us on heavy accounting. A tab now, which took 2 and 1/2 in pay for you, which is free the tuition reversion. We also lost a step. Okay? We didn't freeze the step, we took a step off. We did it because as teachers who work on school district, we didn't want to lose all that to progress. And I wish that I've seen more patch money from the people who live in the district, but I would love to hear more from the teachers about what's happening, when these programs are being lost, and what decisions they're willing to make to help save the program. Because I know as a teacher at the Warren Town, I would do anything to save our program, and we did. Okay? We worked for you, we worked with our board to save our program. And I understand what you said, we come with collective bargaining, even when Shannon was getting something back. Okay? Now we're doing this, which is a huge building project for the debt program. That takes everybody working together. And I have to say, some of the things you've provided, this is half of my suggestions and all, I think you guys are trying to find a way to solve this problem. And I wish you luck, and I hope that all the parties do come together and find a way to resolve this for the students. And I don't think we should be here. It makes me sad to see here, and listen, everybody doing that, everybody else, instead of finding a solution. One thing is, there's a fight solution. And I admire that you, that are looking for alternative ways and trying to find solutions for more, and we do need to find solutions. Because this is the good old life. So we fix it from one, we still have to break down the next year, and the next year, and the next year. So you need to put up some dialogue with parents, give me that, and there's other people who can bring something back to make this school district work. Okay? Because it has to be everyone coming together to make it work. None of the four, 100 people who lost taxes around, that's because they work together. Okay? If you work together and if it, I mean, they've got a lot of businesses, and the businesses provide a lot of things for the school. So you need to build a foundation. And they need to build a foundation where they need to start developing this area, or this getting to us for very long time. And I want to just to say, thank you, and we'll be there in some time, hopefully. Okay? And I'm glad that you know we teachers, guys, we can come back with comparisons and salaries, and that's what we want to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I think it's important, Mr. Wolf, if you could jump in, chair the, you know, the teacher, our collective bargaining partners are working with us, okay? I mean, they need to know, what they have asked, and, and you provided this, how much each one of these cuts is going to cost us? You know, what, what does it cost to save those? And then each part of their contract, what does that, how did that impact the budget? So, you know, if you take the salary raise, what is that number, and what program would that save? Or if it took a step raise, or if it took an educational raise? They need to get that, they're getting it now. So, I mean, this is what we did two years ago, we sat down and came up with various numbers to do this. So it's got to get it forward, and immediately, I mean, it's a great idea when we're in stalemate, but we're no, we're very close to a stalemate. We're all in agreement, we need to do something. It, you know, what part of, of that agreement, you know, are we going to look at, at, at working with? So everybody realizes we have a problem. We know it, they know it, you know it, we're trying to.
Mr. Smith.
I'm on 45, Kelly, love school. And I can show you some real quick, just kind of speaks to, speaks to the perception of our district, and the negative perception that's out there, which most people over here. But there's a headline, just on the Fox 29, news website, headline is about our school. School board meeting leaves parents confused over close cuts. This is around, I guess there's some notes, media over here. So this is the round available here. So, just want to share that.
Thank you for sharing that.
I'm Rachel, all fine and from Southern California, Florida. And speaking of Philadelphia, a week ago, I saw that basically these teachers, the principal had retired and hatched in, like, 100 days of sick time. And, and on the, on the lineups, it was like $300,000, $9,000, $1,000. Do our employees in the district have such a thing? I mean, us in the railroad, neither. Have your patient, have your sick time. You use it or you lose it. Is that something that is on your watch, with the teacher's contract?
Yeah, I mean, our teacher's contract provides for a bank. Our teacher's contract provides for, I think it applies to most of our collective bargaining agreements.
It's over there $300,000 for 100 days.
But we do have a bank.
There is a limit that we're not going to.
There is a limit on the number of days that they can back. And then there's a, a, a DM rate that people can support. And it is watched, but most of them.
Okay, so we're not going to go, so Mrs. Pennza retired.
No, no, when we do an early retirement projection, I mean, Mrs. Pennza, we did, when we did it two years ago, we have, we had, okay, you know, there's X number of teachers that qualify for early retirement, she looks at the number of days they have, and then they would be able to sell back, and it comes up with the thing, so if you're going off early retirement, it's going to affect the district, we're not going to have to put any money out.
My other question is, are you looking at other school districts that are digging off of this management? Because I've been a tax leader for 15 years, my oldest son is 10, and honestly, my children are, they're getting older than they said. So when you talk about fairness, how is that fair for my children?
I can't speak to fairness. I mean, I think we're all almost together, in terms of where we are now. And do we look at what other school districts are doing? Absolutely, we look at what other school districts are doing. I'm online all the time, looking at what other school districts are doing. How do they face the same problems we face? What solutions have they come up with? I talk to board members who sit on other school district boards, and, on a regular basis, at least once a week, I talk to a different person, to ask them, how are you handling what's going on in your school district? Or they call me and ask the same. So, you know, some of the ideas that we've come up with in revenue enhancement committee meetings or, or elsewhere, stem a lot of time from what we've picked up from what's going on around us. You know, we always have our ear to the ground, try to figure out a better way to do this, where we learn from other folks who've been through this before us. Okay?
Dr. Howard, please, nice to see your face. We go, we have a few times.
I don't know whether that's good or bad.
Why are you calling for a review?
Thank you.
Just to your point, I just wanted to add, we've been circulating around some research regarding the Juniata County School District. And just to demonstrate how we're trying to get answers as quickly as we can, about an hour before this meeting, I was on the phone with the superintendent from that school district, to try to find out more information on how they made their pay for sports program work, because they actually did it. So he had to end that conversation, but tomorrow, I can tell you already on my agenda, I'll be calling him to, to see if he can share some more ideas with us, how they solved the problem there. So I, I think it's fair to say we all are constantly looking at solutions. We know there's no magic out there to it, it's going to take a lot of hard work. So I just wanted to mention that when you asked, that we, we do that kind of thing all the time.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
I'm trying to agree. Drew, 3:15, I'm a drive. I want to commend you for listening to everyone tonight. I don't have any other positions, certainly certain tasks. I've heard a lot of complaints tonight, and a lot of what I did not hear was suggestion on running the tax company, the board, and like to find out more about that, maybe participate in some way. Some of the things that I see in the, in the community is, everyone very open for value. I believe everybody that attended tonight is open for value for their children, kindergarten. So some of the thoughts and concepts, you know, I'll just kind of close them real quick. I see a lot of communities, other school districts that have gotten a bit of education in the evening, I'm not sure if that's made better, that might be something that our community will find a little bit more value, maybe able, maybe able to generate some revenue that could be chipped away, perhaps a mobile app for the community, that would generate advertising dollars, not within the community, but outside the community, that can subsidize for advertisements, from a lot, led to donating my services and actually developing a path for the community, a path for the school. I know I can suggest that, this is creative, I guess, personal, it's, I think, maybe developing a lot for the school, for the teacher. But he subsidized to the director, back end, while generating some interest businesses for your backing to do things in the area, perhaps letting that against the township. I think, we've got a lot of interest businesses that will come into the community. Give us some fairway, give us some lead, I get some, give us some, I go, unity on getting our businesses established in the community. Got to give a little bit. So I will start to attack those township communities, and we'll start the community to start to do that, and pressure them to take some of his ideas, start developing some revenue, sure, to provide value to the community, to keep constituency, our school members, our parents, everyone, and to give them value, and on that, they're fit. So.
I would encourage you, I would encourage you to come to revenue enhancement meetings. Those are, that's kind of like our incubator committee. Minutes from those meetings are up on the website, and we, we discuss lots of different ideas, like adult education, merchandising, trademarking, the four-day work weeks, we've talked about, all kinds of different things, advertising, charter charter schools. The problem is, we come up with these ideas, and we need bodies to help execute on the research, and then the administration of these ideas, and, and seeing them through to, seeing them through to fruition. So if you're willing to help, we, we need the help.
Is that information on the site about the R E C?
Yeah, the R E C meetings are posted, just like the rest of our meetings, and if you go on the website, you'll be able to dig up minutes from previous, not only the more recent ones, but even going back years when we first started this process, as to what the issues were that were discussed at the time. And, you know, those ideas were eventually just tabled because we couldn't get the manpower together to, to pursue them. So I would encourage you to come. Thank you.
If I can just add for you, we, right now, our current schedule is the third Wednesday of every month. We meet over at the Matthew Brook Building in the basement, the boardroom in the basement.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that foundation as well? Maybe that's something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just again, for the, the members of the community, we're, this board committed to helping out the local education foundation, which a number of years ago, I was first coming on as superintendent, was not having a very good run at trying to raise money, and I'm, I'm just trying to be honest. So it kind of went into, kind of just hibernated for a couple of years. So it kind of went into, kind of just hibernated for a couple of years. We made a commitment to resurrect that effort, they're in the, in about the eighth month of their quote resurrection, they're about ready to hire an executive director, and again, I don't want to paint that as a silver bullet, but it is a start, and it didn't take, as you've heard from various testimony tonight, it didn't take one or two years to get here, so the foundation's gonna take a number of years to get started, but if we don't start it, it's never gonna happen. So they are actively working, we're actually looking to put together our first fundraising effort, and I'll just make a personal comment, I kind of volunteered my wife to be their event planner for their first event that we're hoping to have in May. She didn't really have much of a choice, but again, I'm not trying to plug myself, but that's the kind of people we are, we're trying to make this thing work, and we're trying to come together, our goal is maybe to make twenty-five hundred dollars, it's a small start. The foundation has four thousand dollars in its account, doesn't go a long way, but if we can get a little seed money to get that started, hopefully that'll grow, and there are foundations that have endowments, public education foundations that have endowments of a couple hundred thousand dollars, right here in Pennsylvania, Al Tuna is always the example, go check their website.
It's an excellent opportunity, I think it's something that people can get very excited about, you know, I think the way we saw this working is our revenue enhancement committee would bring together certain ideas, and we could pass those ideas off to the foundation to kind of run with and do the fundraising that we need to do. They can do the annual campaigns, they can do the capital campaigns that are required going forward. It's gonna take a lot of effort, it's gonna take people coming together, we had several hundred people here at the start of this meeting, if that same number of people showed up to just one foundation event, we could raise thousands of dollars. So, you know, I hear people being very passionate about the programs that we're cutting, we need people to be just as passionate about raising revenue for the school district, and it doesn't have to be isolated to just this community, it can be, you know, across the region, there's lots of dollars we can go reach for, so...
I mean, we did, when we got done with the last one, and they were blocked here, but there's a teacher and her husband that live in the neighborhood, and sent me an email saying, you know, their high school just had alumni dance, they raised thirty-six thousand dollars as an alumni dance, five, six, every year, got together for alumni dance, and I gave, I gave them contact, looked into the foundation, and said, do this every year, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year, a year out, an alumni dance.
If I can just, again, we have a, we have a committed group of about six to seven individuals now, that's not enough, we're gonna need more people, we're gonna need more help, and this is, this isn't, this foundation is not going to be a think tank, we're gonna need to roll up our sleeves and get things done, and that's the first thing I'm telling you right now, we're trying to plan an event to have it in May, you'll hear more details of that, which is, I hear from my wife and the plans we're making to get that thing up and running, but we're moving forward with that.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none around the motion, Jerry?
Second.
Okay, it's meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone. Okay, executive session.
Dr. Otto.
Fisher, time, hang on, Connor.
All right.
Go ahead, Connor.
Hold on a minute. Do we have...